We typically start this meeting with a prayer, reading, or thought. And I'm being told I've got a text message with our, our prayer, reading, or thought will be by just tell us.
Randy Edwards is going to give the prayer.
Randy Edwards. And then Richard Pyatt will lead us in the pledge. Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, our kind and gracious heavenly father, we come before you during this session of county commissioners, and we ask for your peace and guidance. We come before you as sinful creatures, acknowledge our sins, grateful for your compassion. We ask for your forgiveness. Our kind and gracious heavenly father, as we come before you to perform these duties, we are be reminded of those that are in conflict, that are suffering, those that are homeless, those that have been with the storms, those that have been with the fires, and those that are at war, that they may be comforted and understand your loving, understanding, peace, and grace. Father, be with us this day as we continue to do thy work to glorify your name, your kingdom, and your people in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for your help. You too. All right. My pleasure to begin with the recognition of the January 2025 Employee of the Month. Without further ado, it's Jody Carley. Jody, I'll read, Jody, I'll read your nomination letter while you're walking up here. So I would like to nominate Jody Carley for Employee of the Month. Jody has worked in the Welcome Baby Program for many years and previously worked in WIC. Because of her background working in both programs, she is amazing at collaborating with other departments to provide great service to the public. Most recently, she assisted with a baby that was having difficulty with feeding. Jody was able to help one of our staff make a connection with WIC before their office was officially open for the day. The baby was able to get connected to the needed resource extremely fast. Jody is a hard worker along with being very thoughtful and caring. She assists our newer employees with answering questions and uses her strong problem solving skills to help our clients to have the numerous risk factors and needs by searching until she finds the resources that will best help them. One of her clients is a mom with very limited literacy abilities, and Jody worked diligently to ensure this client received the information in a format that made sense and helped this mom increase her knowledge in parenting and developmental milestones for her child. Jody is an asset to Welcome Baby Program. Thanks, Jody. We'll come down and get a picture with you. And then the only requirement is just a speech, like seventeen, twenty minutes. It always cracks me up how like we coax our employees to come to commission meeting. Only to find out you're the employee of the month. You didn't know. Yeah, they're, they're very good. Well, this is a little bit of.
Thanks, everybody who voted for me.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all. And yeah, I don't blame you for not wanting to stay. That's okay. Our work session items, the first one is a presentation by the Utah County Fair. Do we have some friends here that'll?
Craig Conover is here from.
We're gonna let Craig do it?
Yep.
Okay. Just kidding. We trust you, Craig. Come on.
We can let Brandon do it.
You want it done right. We're, we're happy to have you, Craig. Appreciate you and all you do for our county fair.
Well, you know, it's great to be here today and to, to be with you. Sorry, we didn't make it the last time. And today is actually the meeting of all of the state county fairs. So my cohort in crime, Mike Duffin's down in Juab with that. At a meeting. So getting a lot of good ideas for the fair coming up this year. So I'll be quick. Don't want to take up only a little bit of meeting, maybe fifty minutes for Brandon. Let's talk about the fair and how we did this year. So last year, our theme obviously was Footloose at the Fair. Our goals were to increase attendance, get more of the community involved, have more entries in open class. That was something the commission wanted to see. We added an additional horse show. We expanded our kids area and tried to increase our vendor participation, all while staying on budget. We also added a concert on Wednesday night to kind of kick off the fair, which was an okay success. Probably not the best, but it was okay. Overall, our attendance was up about fifteen percent. We were able to get more people involved, both from the county side and from volunteers last year. There were two hundred sixty-eight volunteers coming to help at the fair. We got a new volunteer coordinator last year, Laurie Ann Davis from Springville, who was fantastic and is back with us this year, was able to increase that dramatically, which is a huge help at the fair. We kind of rely on volunteers at that event. Our entries in the open class were up twenty-five percent. We're going to try for that again this year. So we're getting a lot more participation from just general people throughout the county. The kids area worked better. We moved them all in with the vendors instead of having one big area so that when mom walked around, the kids had stuff to do and mom had stuff to do. The vendors liked it, and we're going to do that again this year. So that was a, a good move that we made. We did have more vendors last, last year, which was another goal. And I think that our makers market has turned out to be one of the best things we've done at the fair since Mike and I started doing it. Instead of just having your average air conditioner, electricians, whatever there at the fair, we have people with crafts and lots of different things. And if those other kind of people want to come, they can as sponsors, and we let them in and they pay, pay for that and help fund the fair. We did end up with about ten of those last year. So we got about fifteen thousand dollars off of sponsorships that way. And people like that that want to be there, like the spas and the different things like that. Our concert was great and did turn out to be a good way to start the week. It wasn't a great moneymaker, but it was a fun time. So as we move along, last year, our projected revenues for the, we projected at three hundred and sixty thousand. Actual revenues were three hundred and sixty-three thousand. Our projected expenses were about five sixty, and we held that at about five hundred and forty-five for the year. Left us a carryover for this year of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And so, I mean, obviously, you know, I'm Brandon Knows, Commissioner Beltran. I haven't had the pleasure to meet face to face yet, but the fair does not make money. There are certain things at the fair that just cost money. So we try and make up as much of that as we can with the demolition derby, sponsorships, monster trucks, and things like that. But the, the way we did it last year, I think Ezra was a huge help in that, and I think that's going to work out. So our requested funding, which I believe is from the T-TAP money, for this year should be one, should be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to move the fair. And hopefully that continues to work. And it kind of looks like it's going to, as we move forward, be kind of the same every year. We can hopefully make the same amount back in revenues to keep the fair kind of self-funding in that way. Couple of question, I mean, I don't know if you have questions for me or anything like that that you want to ask, but I do have a couple for you guys.
All right.
What I would really like is if we could get some kind of really good contact at Public Works. I mean, they were awesome last year and helped us out with a really great bucket truck for the week, which was fantastic because that helped us from having to go to Spanish Fork and beg for theirs. We need just a couple of little electrical projects done at the fair, fairgrounds, not necessarily the fair, that I think would save us a lot of money and, and stop us from having to rent generators and things like that for a week, which can get kind of pricey, as you know. Just some enhancement to the fairgrounds. And since the county is kind of a, I think it'd be easier to get the county to do it, probably get Nick to do it. So. Because it would be more for us than for Fiesta Days.
Okay.
Because we use the fairgrounds in a whole different manner, I think, than what they do at Fiesta Days for just a rodeo. So. In our budget, we have always funded the Miss Utah County pageant, which is, I, I don't know if that's where it belongs, if it should be somewhere else. I don't know. We currently give them six thousand. If we're going to continue to fund that, I would love to give them more because I think it's really hard to do it. At least in my past experience at the city level, it, it seems like that's kind of not a lot to do a pageant.
What was Springville's contribution?
We used to give fifteen at Springville, but that was eight years ago.
Yeah.
If that were the case, and you felt so inclined, I'm more than happy to fund it and do it. And the gal that runs it, Sri Erickson, does a great job. I mean, it's really no more work for me, but we would just need more funding. So we would have to up that number as well. But that's, that's totally up to you guys.
Who's taking notes on these things? And obviously, this is not an actionable item.
Right. I, I get that. But I'm just throwing ideas out there and things that I think that might work a little better. You know, they do come and volunteer the girls at the fair, and we run them, you know, we run them around and whatever, make a big deal out of them at our events. So.
What, what was, I can't remember the funding for twenty twenty-four. Was it one seventy-five as well?
Well, what we did last year is what we have got, I mean, it's a little kind of a different animal. We have created a five oh one C three called the Utah County Fair Corporation, and it's underneath the Utah Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau. So right now, I mean, to create it, Lee Adamson, myself, and Mike Duffin are the, I don't know, whatever you call it, the shareholders, whatever, to get that going. That is all done. We now have our own federal number as a five oh one C three, so that when we get sponsorships, they can now write it off, you know, as giving money to a nonprofit corporation. The Convention Visitors Bureau is a C six, so they're a little different. But that way, we can keep the money, roll the money over. I mean, in the past, they had to give all that money back. So at the end of the year, they give all my back to county, and we come back and say, hey, we need three hundred, four hundred thousand to put fair on this year, right? So last year, Ezra's idea was to fund us with a seed money so we could move forward with the fair, do the fair, get the money, come back.
The four hundred thousand.
Four hundred seed. That's right.
Which, you know, worked, and it worked. It's, I think it's going, going forward, it's a great way to do it. Because, you know, we will have revenues from the ticket sales and all that. However, the ticket sales from Spanish Fork, as you know, you're about a month behind. So our biggest portion of those ticket sales are in June or July, and I don't see them till after the fair. So trying to pay bills and things like that can be strenuous at best. So it, this way, it worked really well. And they, Lee had us audited. We were right to the penny. So we seemed to work out pretty good.
Okay.
I mean, and you guys don't have to have six hundred contracts coming through you every week.
Yeah.
As I get sponsors and stuff, and I know.
Any significant changes for this year's fair or status quo?
So this year, we have a new theme. We're going to go, we got a good thing growing at the fair. We are currently considering having a cowboy poetry event on Wednesday night. Some of the fair board members wanted to try and do that. So they're trying to find some people. We had a good discussion about it last night at our meeting. I think that's going to happen. It seems to be very popular. Nephi does one. They sell it out every year, and so does Heber. So we're going to maybe go down that road and see. Other than that, we'll have monster trucks again on Friday. We'll have a demolition derby on Saturday, and Thursday night will be the rodeo. Steve's already in on that. So everything's moving forward. It's great because I'm not here asking for money right now. Oh, I am. But I have money that I could go. I've already started booking talent, entertainment, and moving things forward. So. You know, so that part, I, I love it. Makes it a lot easier. So anything else? I mean, we're supposed to come and report once a year. So.
Well done.
We will need you. Obviously, we want you all to attend. I think, I, I don't know with the employees. It seemed like the monster truck thing was a big hit, giving out employees to the county, tickets to the county employees. That worked out real well. Probably do that again because it helps fill the stadium, and it's good a perk for the employees. So.
Awesome. Okay. We don't have any other questions. Thanks, Craig.
Yeah, you know where to find me.
Appreciate your work on this.
You bet. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your support.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. Our second work session item is a presentation by the Utah County Veterans.
Thank you, Commissioner, for giving us the opportunity. What you've done for the veterans by giving us our home that we have, you've given us an opportunity to be able to do the things that I'm able to be able to report. As you know, in, in two thousand and twelve, we were homeless when they knocked down the Eldridge Center. There was no place for us to go. We went everywhere looking for a place, and the county commissioners brought us in. I want to read something that I wrote during our open house, so it will kind of set the stage of how important this is. "We were honored to conduct this open house with a yellow ribbon ceremony renewing our past generations that taught us that service is an honor. Today, the Utah County Veteran Service Organizations are the recipients of this honor, and we are gratitude of appreciation to our county commission for this recognition and opportunity. For those of us that have served this country in uniform, know that we start our basic training. The very first day of training, we were given battle buddies. Battle buddies watch, care, and cover the back of each other in peacetime and in wartime, and we never left a military post or a base without our battle buddy. Today, as we conduct what we do, we are partners of our personal cities, towns, and communities, and our community in this grand county seat. This historical relationship with our Utah County and our Utah County veterans give us respect, honor, and a local victory for our, for our county to give support to our veterans, past, present, and future. And here, in this facility in the Utah County Historic Courthouse, we are given graciously respect, dignity, and honor. On behalf of the Utah County Commission, we appreciate your generosity. Since we took that, we, we did our dedication on the fifteenth of April of two thousand and thirteen. From that time, we just want to continue to emphasize to you that just because we're veterans, we are not entitled. Our entitlement is that we owe our communities and our counties, our state, and nation service so that we can continue to be respected and be honored. The other thing is, I've been doing this, as I said, for fifteen years now. And I've had people come to me and approach me and say, well, you need to get paid for what you do. No, we are being paid because of what you've done for us by giving us a facility to be able to take care of our veterans. And I wanted to go on record that the position that I hold is an honor and never a, a, a position that should ever be paid. If we were ever paid, then we would be told what to do, and we're not going to do that. As veterans, we're going to take care of veterans. First of all, as the Utah County Veterans Services Coordinator, what I have done is I usually schedule all of the, the meetings with the Utah County veterans, the veterans of the American Legion, the DAV, and the VFW, along with scheduling their use of that facility and with Jamie Coombs and the, and the county. I'm also responsible for key control to make sure that those that come into that building are secure and are, are verified and validated that they're authorized to be in the building. Every year, we do a Veterans Open House, and we appreciate the county and its background on that. Tom Sekovich came to me several years ago, and he asked us to do a Veterans Open House. And what we do, we bring in everybody from the state and the county. We don't only take care of veterans, but we also take care of our local citizens to let them know what opportunities that we have in the community that can help them locally. So we want to make sure that we continue to do that. And thank you for your support for giving us the building every Veterans Day week to be able to do that. We used to do it for a week, but we've decided that we've only going to do it for one day. We'll have the Tempe View Veterans Ceremony at Tempe View High School, and then we'll have the open house the day after that. We found out that we've had more participation that way. As, as an example, last year, we had, or the year before last, we only had like nine people that we actually recognized. This year, we did fifty in one day. We was able to get veterans, not only the services they need, but we gave them the Veteran Services Officer and access to Veteran Service Officers so they can get the benefits that they've earned. Right now, the Utah County Veteran Services is working on a Jose Valdez Congressional Medal of Honor recipient statue. We want to appreciate your time for allowing us to come in and talk to you about that. And I understand you'll probably have something on that later on after my talk. I wanted to talk about national information first because I think that's what's important. Let me just reorganize myself. As a National Vice Commander, I was over one point eight million members last year, and was able to visit all the southwestern of the United States. The American Legion is, when I speak about American Legion numbers, I'm only going to be able to speak American Legion because that is my specialty. The DAV and the VFW, we do a lot of things locally together so that we can cut down on various activities, that we can consolidate them to get more participation. But I'm going to give you contacts from, just from the American Legion. But we just want to report that we had eleven thousand two hundred and fifty American Legion family members who took the Be The One Columbia University Training in two thousand and four. They learned how to best respond to suicide and people that want to, that's taking risk on their own lives. We did nine thousand three hundred and forty-two number of messages sent to lawmakers by the American Legion grassroots advocacy. I'm also a member of the American Legion Legis, Legislation, and I, I represent the American Legion with Mitt Romney, now Senator Curtis and Senator Lee, and also with Congressman Kennedy. So we have an advocacy working on legislation all the time, and we do this on a daily basis, basically, on, on our, on our emails. We had four, forty-four normal hearing presentations prepared by the American Legion VA Appeals Presentation, and these are all free of charge on behalf of disabled veterans disputing their initial claim decisions in December. And these numbers that I'm going to give you now are only what we've done nationally in, in December. One million, one hundred and five thousand, five hundred and sixty-three retroactive VA disability benefits awarded in December to veterans who used American Legion appeals representation, again, free of charge. Twenty-seven new Legion service members received accreditation in December to assist and represent veterans free of charge their VA disability claims. We did five thousand seven hundred and eighty-five American Legion Temporary Financial Assisted Grants dispersed in December, stabilizing homes of fourteen children. We did one billion, eight hundred and forty-seven million, eight hundred and thirteen thousand and twenty-five disability benefits secured for veterans in December using free American Initial Claims and Appeals Representation. We had a hundred and twenty-nine Board of Veterans Appeals dispositions rendered in December for veterans using free American Legion representation. Of only seventeen point eight of those cases were denied. Of those thirty-seven appeals, they were granted outright, and another sixty-six were reprimanded for further documentation. We had a hundred and eleven American Legion Junior Shooting Sports Clubs that competed their registrations in December for two thousand and twenty-five. Ninety-eight number of ROTC and Junior ROTC recognition certificates distributed to the American Legion posts by the National Security Division in two thousand and twenty-four. The American Legion Provo Post thirteen sponsors the Junior ROTC program at Brigham Young University and at Independence High School for the Junior ROTC. We present sixteen awards of Military Excellence and four Military Scholastics. And we present those every year at Brigham Young University at their ROTC graduations. We had three thousand, three hundred and sixty-five miles spanned across coast to coast by the National Medal of Honor Highway, US Highway twenty, which officially designated by President Biden on December seventeenth after years of effort of Oregon Legionnaires Dick Thompson and his follow veterans. The American Legion National Emergency Fund Grants dispersed in December to six posts and twenty-five individuals who faced severe losses due to naturalization. We, we, we gave one hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. The amount of the American Legion National Youth Scholarships dispersed in December to thirteen recipients. Two of those recipients were actually from Utah. Two hundred and seventy-nine thousand approximate rounds of ceremonial ammunition was distributed to three hundred and fifteen American Legion posts and. to three hundred and fifteen American Legion posts and thirty-nine departments in twenty-four as part of the Military Surplus Loan Program administered by the American Legion Security Division. They also distributed nine hundred and forty-five rifles, one thousand six hundred and fifty clips, and fifteen static displays. We gave four thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars in the amount of the American Legion Operation Comfort Warriors. I'm proud to say that three thousand, five hundred dollars of that came to Provo, Utah. We have a sailboat program in Utah. They were able to buy the sails for us to help with suicide PTSD therapy. And it's for the Utah Lake Regatta, and we're doing this yearly under Dr. Brown, which is a great opportunity for us. Along with that, the American Legion Provo Post thirteen has also set up a division for communications. We have Post seven twenty, who is also working with us, with the Boy Scouts, who helps us with communications. We could actually touch to satellite in space with the communication systems that we have. We also work with the Civil Air Patrol with the Utah County. And what we have tried to do, working with the Utah County Sheriff's Department, is to help with trying to find those that are lost or emergencies. So we have a communication system that's set up, Civil Air Patrol that can help by air, and then our regatta, our sailboat, to be able to help out on the waters. And so we're working with Utah County on that. We also had twenty-one Eagle Scout Recognition Certificates distributed in December by the American Legion's Americanism Division to go along with the gold certificate to a girl scout. A girl scout was our National Eagle Scout of the Year last year. Post monthly meetings, we do those here every month. We're grateful to use the facility for our district meetings and then our department, we have those quarterly, and we're able to host those because of the beautiful facility and the access for people to get in and out because of their disabilities with wheelchair. We work with the Freedom Festival, specifically on Flag Day. We also put up, we do the Flag Retirement Ceremony every year, June fourteenth, at the Provo Memorial Center on Eighth Eastern Center Street. We'll continue to do that. As a member of the Board of Directors, the American Legion supports sixteen of the twenty-nine annual events by putting up flags and supporting the Utah County in those services. The Utah County Veterans Partnership, we have a meeting every third Thursday, and we hold those, we actually are connected with the operation of the Comfort Warrior and Iraqi Freedom. What we do is we go to Salt Lake City, we attend their meetings, we bring their information down to Utah County for our veterans, and then we also distribute Utah County activities at their meetings. So we are exchanging, making sure that the communications is being distributed throughout the state of Utah. We never, for years before we started this organization, we never knew what was going on on the other side of the mountain. Now, it goes all the way down to Salt Lake, to St. George, because they have an organization that takes that information from us and distributes it down south. We're also involved with the employer's support of the Garden Reserve. What we do is we present Patriot Awards. We're actually, I'm actually a member of the Department of Defense, and what we do is we make sure that our employers are being taken care of by our military veterans that are serving today in the Guard and the Reserve. They'll submit their employers, and we, on behalf of the Department of Defense, will present Patriot Awards to our employers to make sure that they're recognized for their service and their support to our veterans. Because when a veteran leaves and is deployed, the employer is usually left behind trying to find somebody to fill that position. We actually talk to them, and when the employee is deployed, they make sure that they get their job back and they also keep their benefits. A lot of our veterans' employers are just fantastic because they'll pay their benefits so that their family members don't lose that when they come back and has a continual, perpetual benefit as well as long with their tricare while they're being activated. So we really need to recognize our employers and thank them for what they do, and that's what we do. We have Oratorical Scholarships, Boy State Program, Eagle Scout Program, Communications, Civil Air Patrol, and Sailboat Therapy. We also work with the George Wallens Administration Center. We're on the Board of Directors for making sure that veterans get what they need and are able to be represented. I'm on that board, and not only am I a member of that board, but I've been a recipient of what the VA Hospital does for veterans. And I tell you, it's miraculous. Everyone from whoever takes out the garbage to the doctors themselves, when you ask them what their responsibility is, it says, our job is to take care of veterans. In Utah County, we're also staffing our warming centers that we have at the Red Barn, Odyssey House, and at the Seventh Day Adventist, and we make sure that our citizens have a warm place to go. This is something that I personally have worked on ever since I've been a member of the Utah County Veteran Services Organization. I was grateful to be put on the Mountain Land Continuum Board to be able to have emphasis to make sure that veterans are being taken care of. We're also now working, as of yesterday, I spoke with Judge Powell, seeing if we can't work together to help veterans that are coming out of the Veterans Treatment Court. Commissioners, there's not only the Veterans Treatment Court, but the Civil Drug Court needs support. Those individuals that's going through the training and taking those classes are working their butts off, trying to get their lives straightened up and get cleaned up. And when they graduate, they're so excited because now they've entered the program and they've had all of their felonies retracted. But the problem of it is, is it still follows them, and they can't get jobs, and they can't get housing. We need to be able to work with the Mountain Land Continuum of Care, with the county, the Veterans Treatment Court, the Civil Drug Patrol, to see that those people that are really working hard have a chance and a hand up. It's hard for them to find housing when they find out that they have a felony, they get kicked out, then they lose their job. We need to be able to have an opportunity to work with our employers and to work with the homeless Mountain Land Continuum of Care to see that they could have one or two facilities for those individuals to live in. And they need a hand up, not to go through everything that they do and just say, no, you're on your own. So it forces them back to the same environment that they actually started in. We need to support the Drug Court and the Veterans Treatment Court even more. We also did the Winter Solace on the December thirty-first. We also have booths at the Utah County Fair. We participated in the Commissioner's swearing-in this year. We did the, we'd like to be more involved with the County, State of the County address. This year, we were not notified, but we'd like to continue to support that and make sure that you have the flags and support that you need in order to produce those ceremonies. We've also sponsored the Daughters of American Revolution activities. They did their one hundred and twenty-fifth birthday this year. We sponsor a Boy Scout Troop seven thirty. We're also nationally on the two fifty Ad hoc Committee for the National Two Fifty, for our two hundredth and fiftieth celebration that's coming on. And we've actually attached the Freedom Festival's Ellis Island to our national program so that people can go online and actually get their citizenship going through Ellis Island like you would on the Fourth of July at Sarah Park. It's a great program. If you've never been to it, I highly encourage you. The other thing that we're doing is we're setting up a national immigration and naturalization ceremony, and we'd like to be more participative in that and be able to sponsor those so that we can help those that are trying to get their citizenship legally to get their citizenship. We don't have the expertise, the knowledge to give the classes that they need, but we 're willing to provide the facilities and the time to be able to help them to get their citizenship, to help them with their English and civics responsibilities. We do the Boy State Program every year and the Girl State Program. Commissioners, I'd just like to thank you for your time. Thank you for the opportunities that you give us to be able to do what we do. Again, I want to emphasize and be for the record that the veterans are not entitled, but they are entitled to support you, your communities, and your cities, and this nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you for your service. Appreciate you being here. And I see Craig back there as well in his smiling face, so just appreciate you. We will get with you with the dates of the state of the county, and we appreciate you being willing to help us there. I'm sure we can find something for you to do, so thank you. Okay. Moving on to our agenda items. For consent, now, I don't think Commissioner Gardner's joined us, right? Okay, she's busy at the Capitol today, so we'll excuse her. Consent agenda, are there any items on consent, Commissioner Beltran, that you'd like to hold? The twenty-seventh?
Yeah, all quick, but seven, eight, and twenty-four.
All right. Seven, eight, and twenty-four from consent. And then on the regular agenda items, I have three and five.
And I have those as well, in addition to one and eight.
Okay. One and eight, and then, do we have a name for number four?
Yeah, I believe we just had one applicant named Sullivan Love.
Yeah.
And it was already on.
Is that a reappointment?
Yeah, it was already on the resolution.
Oh, perfect, yeah, that's right.
Was it on there? We're going to request, Commissioner, and you're welcome to discuss it today still, but we're requesting to continue number one for two weeks. Happy to have the discussion still, though, if you'd like.
One, I, was it, it was in relation to my email yesterday?
I didn't read the email, but probably.
There's a couple, there's a couple questions, we're just not quite certain.
Let's just hold it and have the discussion, that's it.
Holding one, holding three, we're good on four, just making sure that we let everyone know that Sullivan Love is the name that we are approving there. Holding five, holding eight, and then I have no closed sessions. We'll strike nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, is that correct?
As far as consent agenda item goes, we will be holding number seven, number eight, number twenty-four. On regular agenda, we will be holding number one, number three. With number four, we'll be adding the name Sullivan Love. We will hold number five, and hold number eight, and then we will strike number nine, number ten, number eleven, and number twelve.
Thank you, Jolynn. And let's see here. Okay. UAC, item seven.
Yeah, just for Ezra, I saw it was for the Public Lands Amicus Brief, but that's, the Supreme Court has denied that, so do we, do we still move forward with that? Do we?
That's correct. It's up to you guys. We basically signaled that we would help pay for it prior to the notion, but we just didn't have an agreement in place, and so it's kind of funny, not funny, but it's unfortunate that the amicus brief was sent, but then the Supreme Court denied it. So we're kind of at a position where we can voluntarily help with the letter of support that they previously sent still, but we just need an agreement in place to do that.
Okay, sounds great. I'll move to approve item seven.
Okay, second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, number eight, I just want to go on the record and say I have expressed opposition to lobbying, but I have been a team player and given it a year. I've already been very happy with some of our contract and help there, so I just want to make sure I'm clear that I was suspect, and I'm open to giving them a one-year trial, and so far I've been happy, so I'm just putting that out there.
Perfect.
And with that, I will move to approve item number eight.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes.
And then last is, I just want to recognize Deputy, or Chief McDowell from, you know, he covered our Eagle Mountain Division for a long time, and they're celebrating him today at the Correctional Facility and his retirement, so I'm thanking him for his years of service to the Sheriff's Office. And with that, I will move to approve item twenty-four.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item one is the ordinance amending.
And you just want a motion to continue that, Ezra?
If you want to have any discussion, that's fine. We are addressing some of the comments that you'd emailed about, but you're welcome to have some discussion about what you guys would like to see with this. I'm happy to help explain the purpose behind it and then make a motion to continue.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna be on board with just adding, so I guess I'll say it now. I would just like a reporting requirement quarterly, so we just get a list to the commission of what was, what was, what actions were taken, and that's, I'm fine with the rest as long as we have a reporting requirement in there.
Okay. We're also going to clean up some of the other sections. Right now, there's some inconsistency with the rest of the code, and so we figured while we're addressing adding that reporting requirement, we'd see if we could tackle some of those other things while we do that. So we'll get a copy that you guys to review ahead of that.
Excellent.
But two weeks should be enough time.
Okay.
Anything from you?
I don't have any issues. Yeah, so if you want to continue to the February twelfth meeting.
Great, I'll move to continue item one to February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that is continued. Item three, approve or deny the request for Cougar Pride Center to waive the insurance requirement for the Pride and Progress Event to be held at the Historic Courthouse steps on April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five last year. And as many other events, I voted no in opposition of not being willing to put the county at risk for waiving insurance requirements for any organization that wants to rent our facilities, puts the liability on the taxpayers. I'm not willing to do that. I voted no for this last year. I'll be doing the same today.
Great, I don't have any comments there, so I'll make a motion to deny item three.
Okay, I'll second to that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item five, approve and authorize the signing of a resolution between, for tourism tax for Provo Airport. Thank you. Yeah. Did you want to go?
Yeah.
Well, I just want to publicly mention how much lifting our Commissioner Beltran has done on the T-TAP Board for this and scrutinized the, very, very well, the agreement. And I see attorneys' heads nodding, and they don't, they don't have problem, issues with that. That's a good thing. Appreciate, appreciate all the good questions you're asking and your role, and this is a real big highlight for our county, especially in the Provo area. So that was really my reasoning for holding it.
Yeah, no, mine's similar. Not every day we vote on generational projects here, and this is one, for sure. Many months, kudos to Ezra, instrumental in this. This has not happened without Ezra. Provo, great partner, that has not always been the case between the county and the city of Provo, so it's great to see that relationship be moving and progressing better. Isaac, Deputy Mayor in Provo, instrumental in this. Brian does a great job at the Provo Airport. This is a big, big deal, a big contract, a lot of money. As Commissioner Goran said, I've spent a lot of months scrutinizing this, and I feel like we have the best outcome here, and it's a win-win. I've said from the beginning, it helps us to re-energize that tourism account that we're using these funds for while also being a convenience to our residents. And I look forward to seeing what we do there. And, you know, one more thanks to Ezra. Big, we might have to name one of the gates, the Ezra Nerr Gate, because you had this vision and it got done, so thank you to everybody involved. And with that, I will move to approve. And with that, I will move to approve item number five.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and our last held item is item eight, the Property Tax Actions in the recommendation letter.
Commissioners, I'm willing to have the discussion on this. I know that Commissioner Powers Gardner continued this last commission meeting, and since she's not here, we thought maybe we'll continue it again, and then we can address her concerns when she's here next.
You may be working off of the agenda that was sent Friday.
Yes.
And it was revised, so is, is your number eight a different number than?
Yes, but that's, no, that's totally fine, and it sounds like we should have held it anyways. Worked out perfectly. Perfect.
Okay, so we're recommending a continuation here?
Yes, please, just to.
To the twelve?
Two weeks, good.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I'm, it's item eight, correct?
Uh, yeah. Yep.
I move to continue item eight until February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, and I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.